To big like it's. The first. Parks.
Who is? It's Kano. If I say Kano, he says it's Kano, vice versa. And then Kelly, Kelly Albin. So they came to us from the city of McKinney and the city of Rallette. And so they'll be overseeing the new rec centers. So yeah. Kano. Kano. Okay, so we'll start off with a mission, mission or vision and mission. So our, our vision is to enrich lives and build a community through exceptional parks programs and experiences. And then our mission is to plan for how citizens function rather than force, forcing them to function within the limitations of our plans. So we kind of use that programming, making sure that we're programming when people are actually going to be there. Cause that obviously helps a lot. Um, departmental overview. So in parks, we got 220 acres of park space and those are kind of all the amenities within it. Eight playgrounds, eight soccer fields. Five neighborhood parks, two regional parks, two splash pads, one community park. And then once we finish the construction out there, we'll have one skate park and pump track. Uh, for facilities, um, we contract mowing for 110 acres of park space, uh, two cemeteries, 344 acres of right of way. Uh, one animal control facility, five fire facilities, two police facilities and the civic center. And then we also oversee the maintenance of the golf course, nine hole golf course, 54 acres. And then we'll have two rec centers when they're both up and going. Uh, in terms of activities, uh, we offer, we've had 34 athletic programs, 27 recreation programs, 18 senior programs and 16 events. And then for the golf course, uh, in terms of rounds, uh, to date, we've done 328 18 hole non-resident and 784 18 hole resident. And you can kind of see the numbers there where nine hole residents, 1,001 95. Uh, and then we've had 3,526 member rounds. And we actually upped our members this year to 202 and a lot of that's due to our pricing structure that we implemented this year. So. Uh, in terms of staffing, our recreation services has 11, uh, full-time employees, five part-time administrative. We have five full-time employees. And then we have 14 full-time and three part-time within parks. That also includes the golf course as well. Um, so our org chart, just kind of give you an idea of how we're laid out. Uh, rec services, uh, on one side, parks and golf on the other, and then administrative kind of in the middle. Um, so they all work independent and underneath each other. Um, so our accomplishments for this year broke ground on the rec centers project, contracted out, uh, mowing and right of way operations, which has been hugely beneficial. Uh, in terms of beautification, uh, we completed the soccer field light installation. We filled seven leadership positions for the rec centers this year, which added, yielded about 62 years of parks and rec experience. Um, so that's, that's the first time we've ever been able to do that. So that's been very helpful as well. Uh, completed Oak Creek Trail Phase Two, implemented a new recreation management software. Opened the splash pads on time for the first time in three years and the staff behind me, they, they were very monumental in helping getting that accomplished. Um, repaired 131 monuments, um, at Forest Park Cemetery and we're in the process of repairing 164 at East Mount currently. Uh, lighting for JLU trail and splash pad be done in July. And then the new playground for Warren Park will be installed in July as well. Um, so turning to budget request, so capital request, we're asking for a peri-weather alert system. So what we would do is have two weather system alerts out at the sports park and one at the golf course. It's audible and visual. Uh, and has a pretty good range. If you've been over to Texas A and M Commerce, that's what they have the yellow strobe on all their buildings out there. Uh, that's what that is. Um, and then East Mount Cemetery Road, um, is in needed repair, uh, to start ma- start repairing that. Uh, we're asking for a John Deere 7700 reel unit, uh, and that would be used for the sports park. Uh, we currently have two, the 3225 has 4,000 hours on it. Starting to cost us a little bit more money. Um, it's a five gang reel unit, specialty mower, uh, that we would use on the event lawn and then all the athletic fields. And then, uh, the sports park phase two, um, which would run about 20 million and that would be to turf all our baseball fields. Obviously turf them, I wouldn't need the mower. But, uh, I figured it's a cheaper option. Um, but the, uh, to turf all our baseball fields, all our soccer fields. Um, uh, we feel like that would help us in terms of getting play in and then attracting visitors tournaments. Uh, they want to go places where rainouts and all that isn't, is less likely. So that would help us there. Uh, turning to personnel, um, currently we have 30 full-time employees and eight part-time. Um, and the current, uh, position we're asking for out of operations is a park planning coordinator. And really the role of this person would be to help us manage the parkland dedication, uh, fund and projects and helping plan what our parks plan out ahead of the parkland dedication. Um, to help us get those positions or those projects in order and, and then implement it. Um, and so, um, currently our, our total budget is at 2.6 million. With general fund, rec fund and the golf fund. So requested personnel, um, would be last year, if you remember, uh, came to you, told you, told you, we would be asking for nine full-time employees coming this year. We were, staff was able actually to slim that down a little bit. So we'll be asking for seven in rec, uh, full-time and then one in admin. Uh, for a total of eight full-time employees and then we would add 80 part-time employees. But 20 of those are what we consider buffer positions. So, uh, we budget 60, um, but 20 of those, and even though those 60 probably will never reach uh, the thousand hours that we budgeted for it. Um, but, uh, we have those built in there as well. So that would come out to be, uh, add an additional 653,000 to the general fund and 639,000 to the rec fund. Um, in terms of 25, 26 total personnel, uh, this is what it would break down to 38 full-time, uh, 88 part-time. Uh, and we'd have a total of 126 employees. And then the general fund would be at about 3.4 million, uh, rec fund at 746,000. And then the golf fund, uh, staffed at 317,000. So our, uh, total personnel costs will be about 4.4 million. Uh, looking at parkland dedication on the riots, kind of the map, if you're unfamiliar, uh, when, when contractors are building, uh, houses here. They pay parkland fees, uh, that money's got to be spent in the district in which they're building. And then the city has a match that goes into an opposite district. Um, and that's just to make sure that we don't forget about the areas that aren't being developed and just kind of keeps it a little better balanced. So this is your five of this, um, of this program. And so currently we've taken in 1.9 million. Uh, in park fees and that includes the city match as well. Uh, so about a million in fees and then 924,000, uh, matched with the city. And we currently have about 875,000 available. Um, and then just kind of some inside ordinance was passed and approved in 2020. Um, fees cannot be used for park or for maintenance, park maintenance. And then the city match is up to one cent. And then the parkland dedication ordinance uses parks master plans to help guide land acquisitions, which is something we've really got to look at, uh, moving in the future is getting land so that we can expand park systems. So parkland projects, uh, that we've been, that have been completed, obviously the Warren Park playground, uh, you guys passed the last meeting. So that one will be started in July. Uh, park trees, we've got those in. So we're just trying to determine, we're probably going, I know we said 50, we're probably going to do a larger tree and do 30. Uh, just to give them a little better survival rate. Uh, we feel like we can do a larger tree and get 30 trees in there. Um, JLU camera upgrade, that's been completed, JLU trail lights, um, that'll start here in the next 30 days. Uh, restroom remodels, uh, for all our restrooms in our parks, uh, came back. We're still evaluating that. They ranged from 200,000 to 1.1 million. So we're trying to see what all the differences are there. Uh, the event lawn stage design, uh, and then the skate park portion of the pump track. If you'll remember, we did initial five, half a million out of, for the, uh, pump track and we came back and added the 450,000 to it for the skate park. And then our 25, 26 priorities would be a master plan update. We've about exhausted all the things, uh, in that initial proposal for us to do within our parks. Uh, pavilion for Oak Creek, um, we ripped that one down slab, had a huge crack in it. And then add solar lights for Wright Park. We have a lot of pickleballers that like to go out there, um, on the tennis courts and we've overlaid them with pickleball. So we need to get some lights, solar lights out there. And then Oak Creek parking expansion, think that's something we have got to start looking at in terms of adding parking there because it's a heavily used park right now. I just don't know if it's because of the sports parks closed or, uh, people are just, they like that park. So. Uh, perimeter fencing and landscape, uh, like Grand Park, keeping people from driving in the parks. So putting some sort of, uh, fencing or perimeter up to where we can keep the grass clean and the trails not 30 foot wide because they're driving on it. Um, and then land for future park space. Um, so looking at our general fund, uh, budget notables, our operating expense difference from 24 to 25 to 2526 is 224,850. And then budget, budget personnel expense difference is 1.1 million, 602,0429. Uh, and then we moved something to note is we did move special events from the rec fund to the general fund this year, just to get that separated out. And then, uh, something we've built into there is we took the light show out of this year's budget. Um, just, we felt like attendance was down half last year. It's just too expensive to add, add pieces. And I feel like there's people want to stay in their cars, uh, versus, versus walk. So what we're doing is taking that money and adding on to our Christmas parade downtown. So we'll be working with, um, um, uh, Micah. McBey on, on that event and expanding on, on that Christmas parade that night, something down there at Farmer's Market. So. Uh, looking at the rec fund, operating expense difference is 99,030. Uh, personnel expense difference, 645,278. And then, uh, we moved special events out of the rec fund and moved it to the general fund. Uh, golf fund, expense difference, 45,538. Personnel difference was 16,557. And some, one of the reasons for the, uh, expense difference going up is we added real mower maintenance. It's something we do every year. They just never had it built into the details. So we're having to always find it. Um, and it usually takes something else away. So we added that and as well as added pond maintenance, uh, just to help improve the aesthetics out there. Uh, and we added it in our parks, uh, budget as well for the sports park, grand park, et cetera. Um, moving on to bond update. So our current bond budget overview. If you look at contract summary, so we have the approved contract amount, uh, and then we have pending, uh, changes, which is about half a million dollars, 509,000. And what that means is they haven't quite made it to, uh, CR or change request yet. They, they've just been turned in as RFI or ASI. Uh, so we, we kind of flagged that. So we know what's coming. And then owner approved change orders of 625,577. Uh, so the total adjusted contract price is 56 million, 482,70976. Um, so you see the project revenue there, 69 million, uh, and that's taking the $65 million bond, adding 3.3 million in interest, uh, that we've earned on that. Um, and then adding, uh, the roof replacement we did on the existing facility at Reese, that came from a 2023 CO bond, uh, passed by council. And then bringing over 450,000 out of parkland dedication for the skate park. And then our expenses are at 69 million, uh, 73. However, you know, when you go through there and look at that, you've got your design fees at 5.3 million, professional services, your owner contingency is 2.8 million. So it stays, stays pretty healthy. So we're, we're looking good in terms of that project amount and we're almost, uh, dried in, which will help us a lot, especially at Reese. And then the sports park, we still got the gym. But I think, you know, I think we've hit all the real big ones. We've got one coming up in that 509 that we know about, but beyond that, once you get inside, those change orders are much smaller amounts. Um, kind of looking at, at the progress that we've made so far. So this is Reese Davis, um, the gym that we added on at Reese. Um, this is kind of the back of the building looking, uh, to the left. And actually, if you went by there today, uh, it's no longer yellow. They've kind of skin coated it already. So it looks like they've already started the process for stucco. So they should have that done here in, in this week, uh, with the stucco on the exterior of the building. And then that's kind of the other side from the, from the Lee Street view. And you can see they've got the roof, uh, roof panels over there stacked up. So they're starting to replace that roof on the existing facility as well. And then this is interior looking in, this is the lounge where the pool tables will be, game room. And then on the right-hand side, you'll have the dance room, meeting rooms, and on the left far side, that goes out into the gym. And this, this will be the front desk area, walking in the front door. So we'll have, we'll have the, uh, front desk reoriented. So it's facing the front, front door versus kind of being off on the side. Um, and then you'll have the weight room through the big window, fitness center in there. And then we're still expecting, um, completion date was September 27th. And I think they bumped it to, uh, October 7th, uh, at this point. So, uh, so we're looking at October 7th. Sports park, this is looking from the playground back, uh, towards the building. You see the still, uh, that's a meeting or the, uh, lease space on the front left there. Uh, and then the steel structure portion of that is the weight room, uh, exercise facility upstairs. And then downstairs is your, uh, restrooms, offices, uh, and concession area. And then the gym is back there towards the, uh, line on the, on the gym. This is looking into the natatorium. So they've almost got to the point to where they've got it dried in, where they're taking supports down, got the roof tied in. So we, we expect, uh, the pool, uh, contractors to be here July 2nd to start excavating, uh, the pools out of there. And so what they did from a design standpoint is get everything dried in and they built the windows with extra headers. Uh, beams at the bottom so that they could cover it up with dirt and drive the equipment through the, through the windows. So that's how they're getting equipment in and out of there through those panels. And then this is the gym looking back, front door will be through that opening there, uh, just past the crane. And then, uh, they're on the court right there. And then this is looking down at, uh, one-third of the basketball court. So that's going to be one-third. And then you've got the, uh, poured, the poured, the other third to the left is poured and the poured, one to the right, um, is supposed to be, was supposed to be poured today. Um, so I didn't see trucks out there. So it may be tomorrow. And then this is looking from the back of the gym where the storage area is for the basketball courts, uh, back towards the building. And, and so that basketball court area is 69,000 to 70,000 square feet, just the courts by themselves. So it's a very large space. And then this is the pump track, uh, this, that completed the, the pump track while it is done, we, there's still a lot of things we have to do with side amenities around it, turf, the drainage areas in the middle. Uh, and then get that, uh, figure out lighting, bench seating, all that good stuff. And then moving into kind of membership pricing, uh, notable adjustments for Reese Davis is that we added Reese Davis memberships. You'll remember last year, we were going to have one membership. Uh, is for both facilities. Uh, what staff felt like is that we needed, uh, something to appeal to citizens looking for more economic option. So they added a Reese membership, uh, that's very cost effective. Um, and then the sports park center membership will get you into both, but Reese will just get you into Reese. Um, and so list out the member benefits there with the, uh, from the game lounge to fitness to cardio, uh, team lounge. And then additional opportunities with birthday parties, event rooms, classes are free for seniors. And then specialty classes will have additional cost to that. And then for the sports park center, uh, really the only adjustment we made to this, uh, these rates is that we condensed, remember we had two, two family rates. Of four and five or five plus, I think. And so we condensed that to one family membership. Um, and then we added some, so for members, uh, under additional opportunities, uh, with classes, you'll have 20 plus classes weekly that are free for members. Um, and there's a dry sauna, playroom, uh, will be free, um, with membership, et cetera. So. If future needs, uh, really something we've seen is we think there's an opportunity on I-30, uh, where the flag is to kind of clean up some of the trees and. uh, where the flag is to kind of clean up some of the trees and landscape there and create a, a very kind of a gateway into the community with signage, something similar like what's right there. Light up signs similar to what we have on sixty-nine and three eighty. Uh, I think that, that would be a good thing to go in there. As well as sports park field updates we talked about earlier with turf, updating turf and adding another baseball field and a concession, uh, restroom there for soccer. Uh, and then parkland and trail development, uh, which we talked about park, park master plan needed. And then with trail development, we're currently in the process of doing a trail master plan for the city, uh, currently as well. So, uh, and then that would put us, uh, in a good spot. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate y'all's support. All right, thank you guys.
Good afternoon. All right. So I'm here to talk to you about what community engagement did this last year and budget requests for next year. So we'll start with an organizational, organizational chart, so, uh, no changes personnel-wise from last year. So we have our tourism manager, Main Street manager, uh, two employees at the GMA and then our digital media coordinator. We are having one personnel request this year and that's to take our box office coordinator from part-time to full-time as the GMA reopens and we gear up for the changes that we expect, uh, to become more busy next year, kind of back to where we were. It's going to help us to have him here on a full-time basis. So that would bring the department up to six total, full-time employees. Only two capital requests for next year, one is to remodel the GMA lobby bathrooms. Uh, with the changes that we're making upstairs, we, again, we expect to see growth. And the bathrooms are, they're, they're ready. They, they need a remodel. I think they probably haven't been refreshed since the nineties, maybe the eighties. It's been a while, uh, and they just need a complete overhaul, sort of floor to ceiling. Estimated cost on that, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then with the growth that we're seeing at the Farmer's Market, uh, we feel like we're at a point where we could add a second awning. And the idea would be that, uh, if you've been out there, you know, the awning runs parallel with Lee Street. And so what we'd like to do is to, uh, where it runs into that red brick building there that we'd turn the corner and then it would run parallel with Bodark. And so we'd run another awning of the same width, uh, it wouldn't be the same length, there's not enough space there, but it would add more spots under the awning at the Farmer's Market. Twenty-four, twenty-five events that, uh, we sponsored. Halloween on the square, Christmas parade, holiday market, our Black History Month events, of course, the Farmer's Market, the Fourth Annual Festival of the Arts, our music at the market show, which we're doing the second set of those this summer. We just started those last year and the antique fishing lure and tackle show, same thing, this will be the second, uh, one of those this year. And of course, Lee Street Jamboree. And we work with other departments on, uh, Fiddle Fest, Hanging with Heroes, the Holiday Lights, Lick Con, the Major's Field Play-in and the Juneteenth, uh, celebration that happens annually. So some things that Main Street wanted to highlight that they did this year, that Madison did this year. Uh, Halloween on the square, we saw a big bump in that after COVID, you know, uh, it had gone away. And so last year was the third year that we brought it back, uh, no, I'm sorry, the second year that we brought it back to the square from the drive-through that we had done before when, under COVID. So we saw more than three thousand attendees at that. We think the number's probably closer to, uh, four thousand. I don't know if any of you were able to come to that event, but it was packed and lots of kids running around. It's one of my favorite events of the year. The kids have a, a great time. They love running around in their costumes. We had forty-one community partners. We're hoping to see that number go up. And, uh, we distributed twenty-five hundred dollars in candy, so we've budgeted a little more this year for that because we, we give every single piece of candy away every year. Christmas parade, we saw an increase from ninety-eight to a hundred and eighteen entry, entries in the parade stretch from Bodark almost to I thirty. So it, it was long, uh, the, the tail of the, the head of the parade caught the tail because that's where I was stationed, uh, last year and it was exciting to see that many cars out there and they really look cool. Uh, they, everybody does a really good job putting the lights on their vehicles and their floats and things. It's, it's a great event for the community. We estimate around eight thousand people came out to that. Uh, Madison started a holiday market last year, had sixty-six vendors at it. It was a great success. We're going to do that again this year. Farmer's Market in twenty-four averaged twenty-four vendors per week. So far this year, we're averaging around thirty-five vendors per week. And that number would go up if we had that second awning. There are a lot of the vendors that they just don't want to be in the parking lot. I don't understand that myself. If I was a vendor, I feel like I'd be happy to be out there with all the people who are out there. If you've been to the Farmer's Market on a Saturday morning, it's always packed. We have a lot of vendors that by ten o'clock, they, they pack up and leave because they've sold out. So that, that's very common for what's happening out there, so that's doing really well for the city. The Main Street Advisory Board has awarded five grants so far this year, uh, facade grants for a total of seventeen thousand seven fifty. And then accreditation, two years ago, so right after Madison became our Main Street manager, Main Street America, which is, uh, the national organization that we're under, changed the way that their accreditation functions. It used to be that you could be accredited essentially by having a full-time Main Street manager and having a budget. That was pretty much the extent of it, so everybody was accredited. So they changed it now, so you have accreditation and then you have an affiliate membership. And there are forty points over six categories that we have to score every year and then Texas scores us. And then the national group scores us and they aggregate those scores and that's how they determine if you make accreditation. Well, we missed accreditation by less than half a point and that was better than we did the previous year. So Main Street America, uh, I'm sorry, Main Street Texas visited us a couple of weeks ago. And after talking with them, we feel very confident that next year we should reach accreditation status again. So there's not a huge difference between affiliate status and accreditation status, but it is something that we want to get back to. In the budget request for next year, uh, difference of, so we, we had a change, just to clarify. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget reflects a move, so the tourism board funding, which council distributes out of the hotel occupancy taxes to the tourism board every year so that they can give that to nonprofits that are going to do events in the city and that's fifty thousand dollars a year that gets handed out through the tourism board to whoever applies for that. So that money was under Main Street, which is under the general fund and that's because Doyle, who was here for twenty-plus years, was who managed that program before. So, uh, Summer and I spoke and decided that it would make a lot more sense, since those are hotel occupancy funds, to just move that back to the tourism budget. So what you're seeing, uh, why there's such a big change is because fifty thousand dollars got moved from the Main Street budget to the tourism budget. And you'll see that reflected on the tourism budget in just a moment. So overall, uh, a negative seven point two-two percent difference between twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. So Madison's doing a really great job. She's very frugal and, and, uh, was able to request less funding than she had the year before. On the tourism side, the fishing lure and tackle show is something that we've been very excited about. It went off great last year. We had forty vendors, they gave out tackle boxes to kids and students. There was forty hotel rooms, so that's one of the things on the tourism side, we like to put the heads in beds, as they say. We expect that show to continue to grow. The long-term goal here is that we become a national show for this group. Uh, these antique, uh, tackle folks, it's really interesting. If you've never heard anybody talk about it, it's fascinating. There's this whole group of people and they go and these, these things can go for thousands of dollars. And some of them are a hundred years old that are wooden and hand painted. It, it's pretty cool. So, long-term, we hope that this turns into a national show, particularly if at some point we do get a convention center that could handle a larger event. So that's what we're moving towards. On the Festival of the Arts side, we went from forty-four to fifty-nine vendors, uh, so we're going to continue to build that event out every year. Stacy went to the Dallas Travel Show with the Northeast Texas Tourism Council and they handed out six hundred bags to residents who came through that show and that was in March. Uh, she is part of that, Greenville is part of the Northeast Texas Tourism Council and in May they met here in Greenville and at the museum and got to see what we offer here. And one of the things that Stacy, our tourism manager, is working on is developing tourism activities. And right now she's heavily focused on, uh, two major things, uh, one is on the side, the other one is not. And that's the Gussie Nell Davis Trail. Uh, if you don't know who she is, she's the one who started basically drill teams and she's from Texas. She's on the side of a building over here on, um, uh, Lee Street, uh, going towards the, I think that's right. There's an art installation over here and there's a cutout of her on the side of the building. So she's very well-known in that community because she started drill teams, uh, the Flaming Flashes. And, uh, so there's a whole group of people who are interested in her and the work that she did. And we're looking at putting together basically a tourism package so that tour groups could come through and Greenville be, would be one of the major stops since she is from our community. And the other thing she's working on is the Jefferson Highway. Uh, she just went to a conference last week with that group and getting us on that. They're trying to build that into another Route sixty-six style tourism, uh, attraction. And if you didn't know, the Jefferson Highway came through about three blocks that way. And so it was a historic highway that crossed through Greenville. A couple of places that we promoted the city in, uh, large publications, the Dallas Stars and Mavericks yearbooks, of course County Line Magazine, which is one of the great publications here in East Texas. And then the travel section of the Dallas Morning News and the Wall Street Journal. So budget request for twenty-five, twenty-six. So it's a twenty-six percent increase, but that includes the fifty thousand dollars that I talked about a moment ago. It also includes an eighteen thousand dollar, uh, increase for a new piece of software that we want to purchase called Placer AI. It's a data analytics tool that will allow us to measure foot traffic. Essentially it uses geo-fencing so that we can mark off an area and they'll tell us. It's kind of amazing and horrifying at the same time because they track our phones. And so, for example, we could mark off an area and we could find out how many of these people came from Caddo Mills? How many of these people came from Dallas? Uh, did they go to our restaurants when they left? Did they stay in one of our hotels? Because the phone tracks all of that information, so very useful data for what we do. So if you don't factor in the fifty thousand dollar, uh, change, which is just, again, it's a swap from one budget to another, it's only a twelve and a half percent change. On the communications side, we are working with Civic Plus to redesign the website. That's going to launch at the end of July and also to have a new city branded app, which we're calling G V, which is Greenville Information and Events. The long-term goal that G V would become, um, a chatbot that we would put on the website and then a- at some point to integrate AI with that. That's where everything's moving. Uh, that's a down-the-road thing. We're looking at launching that also at the end of July, so those will come out at the same time. One of the changes we made this last year is a seasonal spotlight, which you may have seen. If you still get a paper juice bill, you're going to get that in your, uh, paper bill. And I've had multiple citizens who have mentioned to me that they saw that. And it's a, a great way for people to keep up with what's happening. It's not just community engagements, events. It's all the large events that are happening across all the departments in the city, so parks, library and, and, um, you know, when the airport has their fly-in, those sorts of things. One of the things that I hope that we see either later this year or in twenty-twenty-six is a neighborhood walks program. So we're calling that Heart to Heart as Greenville's the city with heart, so Heart to Heart Walk Program to connect directly with citizens. We do that on a quarterly basis, so essentially on a Saturday morning, uh, council members, city staff would go into a community and walk door-to-door and talk to citizens and, and get feedback from them. So we're meeting people face-to-face that way. And then another big thing we're going to be working on, uh, for next year is working with Celebrate Media to develop more video programming for the city, so like a monthly news-style program, sort of similar to what Friendly News used to do here. And then adding more video content to what we do to promote events in the city. So one change that we are making is to just move these funds into their own budget line with the long-term goal of building out a more robust communications department as the city grows and that's a long-term goal. So this is sort of a first step towards that and that is just to separate those funds out into their own budget line item. So this reflects that change. So right now you're looking at, uh, a budget of ninety-three thousand two twenty-four, the bulk of that being the, um, personnel. On the GMA side, just from October to February, because we've been closed since the end of February, we had one thousand two hundred and forty-three volunteer hours. Our volunteers are very important to what we do and these are all just community people who come out and work at the shows. They work as, as ushers at the shows, so it makes a huge difference to what we do. We, we couldn't run without those folks. Really appreciate them. We sponsored multiple community events, uh, Black History Month, uh, Greenville Christian School Christmas Program. They do that here every year, uh, Greenville Theater Works Shows, Greenville Harmony Chorus and the Voice of Hunt County. One of the things that's very important to me personally at the GMA is educational programming, so making sure that our schools, uh, students have an opportunity to come in and see artistic programming here at the GMA. That was something that was important to me when I was a kid and so I want to make sure that we pass that on to our local students. So last year we had Texas Shakespeare and the East Texas A and M Band, so they're coming back again next year. And then I'm also looking at adding Ballet Frontier of Texas and then Texas Comedies, which is a theater troupe that does comedic plays based on actual historical events that happened in the state of Texas. And then in twenty-five, twenty-six, one of the things that we're working on is, uh, the Greenville Chamber Music Society, which just formed, doing shows and events with that group. We're hoping to bring in a Greenville Pops Orchestra. That has not been finalized yet, but it's something that we're working on. Adding piano competitions around our newly renovated Steinway, which is coming back here in a few weeks when we reopen. And then we've already got on the calendar for this year as far as just some notable named artists. Uh, Gene Watson, John Conley, Marty Stewart, Crystal Gale and Ambrosia coming in, uh, January. I like yacht rock, so I'm excited about that one. And then our tech upgrades, we've been closed since February. We will reopen in October, our open house, so go ahead and put that on your calendar, is September twenty-fifth. We'd love to see, uh, all of the council members there for that. You're going to get a chance to see what we did upstairs and, um, the changes that were made. One of the things that I, that I like to show on the GMA side every year is just the changes, uh, from year to year in days rented or booked and the number of events. So you can see in twenty-three, we had seventy-three total events and twenty-four, we bumped that to seventy-five. This twenty, and FY twenty-five, we only had thirty-six, but again, we were only open from October to February. So right now for next year, uh, we can actually add, I think, two more events to this because I've had some things come in in the last week, um, that didn't make it onto the slide. So we're at around sixty total events for fiscal twenty-six. And I feel very confident that we're going to pass that seventy-five mark for next year. The goal, my long-term goal is that there's something essentially every weekend at the GMA, something that you can attend. Budget request side, we're looking at a pretty big jump, but the jump is because we cut our budget this last year because we were closed seven months out of the year, so I cut my budget considerably as far as special events, advertising, the, the typical things that cost us the most money upstairs. So that's where the big change is there and of course also the personnel increase. So that's a forty-nine thousand dollar difference if we move the box office coordinator from part-time to full-time. Just a couple of photos for, that I can show you, changes that are visible that are upstairs. You can see there, that's the original wooden grid that was put in in nineteen thirty-nine. That's now gone. It's been replaced with a new steel grid. All of the, uh, motors are up. Everything that needs to be in the air is in the air. And, uh, the brick, there's kind of a gap you can see in that photo of the new steel grid. That's been filled in now. They had to knock the brick out to get all of the motors and in, into the air. And so, uh, there was a mason that came in two weeks ago, I think, and filled all that back up. So the firewall is back intact. And then we, uh, as far as something that's visible right now, uh, they put us a new tech desk in. I don't know, if you've been to a show, you may have noticed, we had just a couple of old wooden desks that were there. Uh, it was also kind of tricky. I've worked a handful of shows where I was working tech at the show and you're on a slant. And so one of the things they did was level under the desk because having sat through a couple of shows myself there, it, it, your legs start to hurt after a while because you keep sliding off the chair. So with the tech folks are going to be very happy that they leveled that right there and it's just, it's aesthetically, it's a much nicer look. This does reflect the seating that we lost, so you, you, again, if you were in the GMA before, you may remember that there were two sets of four seats on sort of the top edge of that photo. And then where that small wall is behind, there was a row of seats, so we lost a total of twenty seats in the lower area. Any questions?
I have. I think I'd like to. Vance now. In the gym. What is our name?
Sure. Sure.
Sure.
But I'd like to, I'd like to look at that, or I'd like a presentation on it.
Sure, I can put that together for you.
Okay. Can we get that on executive session next time? Or would it be executive session? Because is it competitive? I assume it is.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's published. You know, our rates are published, but there is competition in the market.
One way or the other, I'd like a presentation on that.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce, we have a couple of staff here. I don't know who else is working in the library right now. I'm kind of worried about that. But Kristy Melton is our Youth Services Librarian, Kenneth Flynn is our Circulation Assistant, and then Priscilla there is our Circulation Services Librarian. And then Jimmy back here, some of you know Jimmy, he is our Library Chairman for our Library Advisory Board. So I appreciate their support in being here today. Just want to talk about the budget presentation for the library. Oh, I have to click. Oh, my bad, sorry. There we go, sorry. We are an award-winning library. If you look at the picture there, that's a really nice picture they took, the community engagement team took that, I think so, and then we just kind of use that now as our kind of our picture now for our library. It's just, it's a really good picture. You really can see a lot about it. You know, if you didn't know, it's supposed to be a piano, if you didn't realize that before, but it's shaped like a piano, if you didn't realize that. So that's what, when they first built it back in 1996, that's shaped like a piano, if you didn't know that before. Our library mission statement, "It provides equitable access, sorry, to the evolving world of information, education, and leisure." Our vision statement is, "We'll be a vibrant, enriching, and inclusive community center that educates, empowers, and inspires." Really, our tagline is, "Libraries empower lives." Here's our organizational chart. I did a different one, but this one hopefully looks better. It looks better than the other one I did, so. We have a library director. We really have four different services. We have digital arts, where we have a digital arts librarian, does a lot of our graphic art in the library. We have adult services, where we have two different adult services underneath that, librarians. Then we have a youth services, which is Kristy, and then she has a youth services librarian associate underneath her. We have circulation services, which is Priscilla, is the circulation service librarian. And so what we're looking at is a new library programmer, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But that's kind of our organizational chart. Plus, we have two seasonal assistants. We have those two are working right now. One of those, most of you know Patricia, her daughter Joy works for us during the summer. And these are some of our accomplishments. We are an award-winning library by the Texas Municipal Library Director Association for over 17 years. The Friends of the Library, they did receive a $10,000 grant from Artrusa. Artrusa always has that tour of homes that they do, and they gave the Friends Library $10,000, and that's supposed to go towards a Bookmobile. But we also, you know, who visited Friday, you saw our Shush Booth, I think somebody went into it. Did you go into it? I think, yeah, Ramon went inside of it. He did get out okay. Couldn't hear him at all. We also received, we also got a new information desk and also got a reading pod, but you can see Congressman Self, a couple, a while back, I guess it's been a while now, visited the library and looked at everything we had there. And also Natalie gave us an award for being an achievement of the library award. And then that's just pictures of our staff. And then one picture there is, was one big library program we had last year. I think that's one of our animal shows. These are also talking about our services. We have circulation, youth, adult. We also have something we forget about a lot is our Northeast Texas History and Genealogy Center, which is very, very important for this county, for the city, throughout other. We have so much else in that area. It's just a small area, but we have so much in there. And also our Digital Arts Learning Center. And kind of show you some stats. We definitely have digital resources. People ask us about our digital resources. We have, we have texture databases, we can do so much on there. We have Blackstone Audio, which is just audiobooks, e-audiobooks. You know, a lot of cars nowadays do not have DVD player, CD players, and now you can have that through our Blackstone Audio to listen, audiobooks. We have Libby, which is otherwise known as Overdrive. And then Hoopla is also digital resources where you can check out books, movies, TV, music. You can binge magazines as well on there, so you have anything you want on that circulation in that Hoopla. We have also Boundless, which is a new program, not really a new product, but Baker &amp; Taylor has that, and we started doing that with Simply E. That's a free product for our library. We don't have to pay for Boundless. That comes from the state library. And then News Bank is newspapers, and then we just recently got Parent TV because we're becoming a family-based library, and we got Parent TV, which has a lot of great programs for parents that they can go on TV and watch videos about a lot of things. So that kind of tells you about our digital resources that we have. And then our library visits are, we're going up. If you notice, 2023, about 75,000, 2024, we're looking at fiscal year, about 111,000, and then just already, over 69,000 already, just between October and May, people are coming to the library. Even checkouts, our checkouts are going up. We had 115,000, they had 175,000 in '24, now just in October through May, and 96,513 checkouts. That's going to be any, that could be books, could be movies, could be any type of STEM kits we have, anything we have, hotspots, those type of things that we have. People are checking them out. There's a lot of checkouts. And then we get a lot of new cards. It's interesting, we had somebody from Rockwall just get a car from the library. We have a lot of people from Roy City that come, even Commerce and other areas that come to our library outside the county, who visit, because they say it's better for them, it's cheaper for them to come to our library. And so in October and May, we had 997 new cards, and I think we have more now because summer reading started. Try that again. Thank you. Did you miss Youth Services? Go back. There you go, thank you. And this is for, we do a lot of things for youth. We have a lot of programs for youth. We do have a computer they can use as well. We also have references. Our references are going up. But the one I want to look at is the programs, want to kind of look at that real quickly. In 2023, we had 478 programs and over 7,000 attended, and you can see already the numbers are going up. 2024, we had 521 programs with over 8,000 people attending those. And then through October and May, we only had 152 programs and already over 6,000. That does count Touch a Truck we had recently, because Touch a Truck was May 31st, and we had over probably 1,200, 1,400 people at Touch a Truck. It was really crowded, and it was, parking was really hard to find. And then we do also do a lot of outreaches as well. We did 11 outreaches in which we had 1,808. That's kind of how we count when they come by our table, we count that. It's the people outreach. We do that at schools, we do the Hunt County Fair, Senior Resource Fair, and those type of things. We do a lot of outreaches. We're going to, in July and June, we have a lot of outreaches we're going to be part of. And then adult services, we even had a group from Celeste came and did a library tour. I guess they have their own little book club there and they visit us. We also have a writers' group is there and who do writer workshops and things like that. And Amy there is an author, this lady, you can see her kind of on the left side, she's an author here in town. So we had a lot of computer usage in our Wi-Fi right now. It's really, every day we people have Wi-Fi. I don't have a way to count it right now. We changed our Wi-Fi a lot, but there's been over 794 people using Wi-Fi. And the references again, a lot more people are coming into the library. And then our programs for adults, I'd like to look at that again. In 2023, about 163 programs with over 1,981 attending, and then in 2023, we went down a little bit. We changed some different staffing, and then we had over 2,000 people attending our programs for adults. And just already, we only had 69 programs with over 1,000 people attending our programs. And then our genealogy services, which I say is very, very important, which I sometimes think we forget about a lot in the library. We have research computer there, we have microfilm, a lot of the council got to see some of that. We have old newspapers, old yearbooks, some of, if you are graduate from high school, know we have your picture in a yearbook somewhere. We have ancestry.com, which you can come to the library and use ancestry, and I did that, and I found out that I'm related to the Nelson guy, Thomas Nelson Jr., who signed the Declaration of Independence. That's my great-great-grandfather. I talk about that a lot. I'm also related to a guy named Pretty Boy Floyd, but I don't talk about that much. Because you know he was a gangster, so don't talk about him. And we have lots of photographs, a lot of Hunt County history, family history, a lot of archives, a lot of good places are good. If you ever want to look at stuff from, in a long time, even we have different county stuff there as well. And we don't just do Hunt County, we have some Fanning County, we have other things from different, Hopkins County, we have a lot of archives there for different counties for people to look at. And then our Digital Arts Learning Center. If you notice, we did last year, we had a District Five libraries, came over, their summers up there kind of doing introduction for us. That's, we said we're having that again in October, they're coming here again. And then even in August, we're having the Northeast Texas Public Library Directors, going to be visiting the library, having a meeting here as well. But we do podcasting at Digital Arts Learning Center. We try, with the Shush Booth now, we're trying to bring up telemedicine. That's important for people today. Video conferencing, gaming, we have a gaming tournament that Ben was really excited about. We have a Smash Brothers next week, and we have the adult tournament going on that Saturday. Laser printing, 3D printing, we just got us a new 3D printer just recently, graphic arts, workshops, and resin printing as well. So we have all those opportunities for other people, people can use those, our patrons can use those. Excuse me. And a lot of our partnerships we have, we do a partnership with Greenville ISD, Atmos Energy, and L3 both supported our summer reading program. L3 used to, a long time ago when I was first here, they always supported, they were the sponsor for our summer reading program, and now they're back again helping us out. So we're really excited about that. And then Key Club, I'm going to be helping out with Key Club again for, I'm in Kiwanis, doing Kiwanis, and so I'm going to start helping out with the Key Club a little bit through Kiwanis group. I'm kind of excited about doing that because they're great, great young people who really want to lead. And so you can see the fire, that's the fire, City Greenville Fire Department came to our Touch a Truck, there's a line there you can see. We do LitCon, you know, with the tourism, and that's all a bunch of kids dressed up in crazy costumes, they're all about Comic-Con there. And then there's the Johns group, he won the chair, we had a chair decorating contest at the library, and he was very excited, probably told everybody that they won. And then there's me with Biscuit the Bulldog down there. And that Biscuit Bulldog, that guy used to be the city councilman in Bonham, but he, you know, he's not anymore, but he used to be. So that Biscuit used to be, he used to be at the city council meetings right there front. Not really, but he was, the guy inside is. So these are our adventure programs, you know, some of us said, put down numbers. It was really hard to put numbers down because we do a lot of programming. So I try my best. You can see the picture up the right, at the top is also Touch a Truck, and that was parking. You can see that they had to park all the way by Domino's to walk over there to the Touch a Truck. There's not, you know, Edward Jones, the other places, the haircut place next door, but that is parking on the street. Last year we did a, the staff did a, I guess you could say inflatable race. The shark in front, that is Joy, that's Patricia's daughter, she won. Pretty young, pretty athletic, so she won the race. And then what we do also do, thanks for the Parks and Recreation for letting us use their parks, we do pop-up storytimes at the park. So these are all our really, our programs. We have early literacy, we have about six kids clubs, storytimes, family programs, tween and teen programs, adult programs, technology. We do programs for seniors, going to do more art programs, homeschool, we do yoga, book clubs. We have two book clubs now. We have one that's called Books and Brew, which is out at Ash and Rose, and we have a Bean There and Read That, which we have a coffee book club on the first Saturday of the month. We have a lot of gaming tournaments, we do a puzzle swap, and then a lot of events we do. We have concerts too now. Remy Riley, she's going to be here this Saturday for a concert, her trio will be here, free concert for the community. LitCon has been, wow, we had over 800, maybe 1,000 people at LitCon this year at the Civic Center. We had to move it out there, we had no room in the library. We probably had 1,000 at that. We started Fantasy Fair, I went to Scarborough Fair this past, this summer, I loved it, and Kenneth's back here, he helped out with that this year. He was one of the guys that was one of the talents, talented people, so he's really part of that Fantasy Fair, and we did that last year, we're going to do it again. And then summer reading, we have about 61 programs for summer reading. We also have an Author Fest, August 16th, which right now I have 60 authors coming to that Author Fest right now. And also during the summer, we have, adults have about 25 programs. And then we're hoping to do a seed library soon. That talks about our adventure programs. And this is kind of the budget, if you look at it, it's just kind of, we're really 11% rate, you know, increase this year from last year. Our biggest part of that is again, personnel, like everyone else, it's the personnel is your highest budgeting, but we're kind of low in some areas from last year, but we're looking at 11% increase. Kind of tried to not, we got a lot from the guy, from you last year, and so I'm trying to make it a little bit better this year than I had last year. But our personnel is the biggest highest of that. Kind of gives you a look into that. And then this is our, really our one personnel request is, we have a library tech who's really our frontline librarian who does all the desk work, I guess you could say. We'd like to move them into a full-time library programmer, where they'd be doing like some of the newsletters, and they would be making sure programming is going right and do some branding for the library. We already have a young lady there already who just received her master's in library science that we'd like to put into that position because she already does a lot of that stuff already at the library, and her being full-time would be great because she can do more of that and reach out more. Because she's, she's the one that leads the book, being the coffee book club on Saturdays. And then the favorite thing I like to look at is the capital requests, Bookmobile. You know, you've probably heard that for the last three, four years, but this year I made it, I found one that's cheaper. We gave Bookmobile about 150,000 to 170,000. Last year I thought it was 250,000, but I found a cheaper one. It's more like a van-type. The main cost for that is the handicap ramp, if you get one, that's the main cost for a Bookmobile. But I really like to think that we could really use it in this community since it's growing, and there's a lot of people who can't come to the library. And this would be for those who are, you know, who are homebound, this would be for those who are in nursing homes, and even kids in apartments are not able to come down to the library. It'd be a great asset to our city, I believe. And then I'm also looking for library flooring. That building next year will be there over 30 years, and the library flooring, as you can tell, it looks like it, and also the walls around it as well, we really could use those re renovated and remodeled. And I know that recently the maintenance team did a great job in our Audie Murphy room, our meeting room, getting that looking good. Some of you saw that, it looks really great, doesn't it? I mean, I'd like the rest of the library to look like that too, it'd be fantastic. And I'm also asking for library furniture, some of our children shelving, you can like do this and kind of, they kind of, you know, mix and blend. We like to get mobile shelving for that area, and then some different furniture to make it a little bit more spice it up, make it a little bit more prettier than we, than it is now. So that's kind of just our only, that's all the capital requests. That's not much, really. And then last but not least, we really do, in our, my mind, my set, my vision is definitely have a library expansion. We do also have conceptual plans for this already. I had opportunity, Manuel and I had opportunity to visit a bunch of libraries with this architect who does a lot of libraries, her main focus is libraries, and we went with her to different ones, Garland, Anna just, Anna has a brand-new library they're starting, and another library, I think Cedar, Cedar Hill, had a new library, they just kind of, just really made it really great. I mean, it's beautiful what they did to their library, and it's kind of a different one because it's inside a park. It's pretty neat how they did Cedar Hills. And so we went to several of them, and so our idea was, you know, it's time for to kind of maybe look in, look in that direction in a couple of years from now. But that's kind of the way we look at it. The indoor breezeway is kind of more open area, and we have some ideas about that, and then you can have a gazebo in there maybe, or something like that, kind of some outdoor storytime, outdoor stuff like that as well. And with our Harmony Garden we have there as well. And so that's kind of our idea, but I do have conceptual plans for that too. And then I always like to end with two different quotes. T.S. Eliot said, "The very existence of libraries affords the best evidence that we Eliot said, "The very existence of libraries affords the best evidence that we may yet have hope for the future of men, a man." And then Albert Einstein said this, it is true, he said this, "The only thing you obviously have to know is the location of the library. It's behind Super 1." We don't know. Because I ask everybody, I'll tell people that all the time. They don't realize we have a library. It's behind Super 1. So you got to know the location of your library. So, and last but not least, if there's any questions I could ask, I could answer or ask, answer anything at all. Yes? Well, I think we see more than that during the summer. There are times like touch and truck, it was over like, and we probably had over maybe 3,000 come in the library. You know, it's hard sometimes about it because our tracking system, we have two now that we're using. Because sometimes people just come into the restroom and they don't go inside the library or they go into the meeting room and they don't come inside the library. Because sometimes that, we don't get that tracking, who comes into the meeting room and who uses it. Sometimes we don't get that. Some of them, we only get it when they come inside the library. So I could give you numbers. I could, I could definitely write it all down, how much I think, because I think it'd be more. There's sometimes it's not that busy, you know, but there are times when like the summer it's very busy. The fall kind of goes down a little bit, but the winter it gets busy again. It's just, it's just kind of, and every year it's different. But so, because people want to check out books and, you know, people want to bring their kids. That's why we have a lot, we have, today there was kids that are crazy all day long, yesterday as well. Last night we had a teen event. We had over like 80, 80 teens there at our teen event last night. Burgundy Games did miniature figures and they painted them last night. So if I could give you, I could give you numbers for it if you want me to.
I'd just be interested to see. It's just obviously growing. You're doing a great job and just, we can see that they need to go up. So, I mean, I think it'd be a good idea to start thinking about plans.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, appreciate you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your support too. Thank you guys.
Hope this time we'll go into executive session. We'll be back at 6 o'clock. Thank you for being here, by the way, staff members.
Yeah.
I know.
I'll call this regular session, the Green City Council, the order let the record reflect. It's about 6:03. I'm sorry we're a little late tonight. And I'd like to call Kristen Washington up to offer the invocation. Please come forward. Please stand.
If I can.
If you have your head here. Thank you for being here.
Here, keep your head by your heads. For the Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come together tonight for this meeting. We pray for those who are here, for those who are watching online. God, I pray that you grant this council the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding to do your job, to prepare your kingdom as you see fit. I pray that they listen with their ears and with their hearts to what is said. And I pray that we listen with our ears and our hearts to what's been told to us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fact that the United States of America is a true republic on which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have some proclamations tonight. The first one will be for the National Boys and Girls Club. We have representatives from the Boys and Girls Club here. Would you like to come forward? like to come forward.
Say it again?
Y'all like to introduce yourselves or?
I'll start.
This is not removable.
Okay, 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 okay.
I'm Richard Carter. I'm one of the board members of Boys and Girls Club, so I'm glad to be here.
You bet.
I'm Keddie Johnson.
Okay. Good. Of course. And one of the things that I get to do, I'll just say, as mayor, I think I've gotten to do this almost every year. One of my very favorite things is I get to come out and talk to the Boys and Girls Club about government and the city and that sort of thing. And it's always interesting to me because these kids are very bright, they're happy, they're curious. And one of the things I like to say is they're not, they're still not biased by cable news. So anyway, it's an honor for you all to be here tonight. And by the way, I'm going to get to be out there in about a week to talk to you all about that again.
So I'll read this proclamation. Whereas young people of Greenville, Texas are tomorrow's leaders, and any young people need professional youth service to help them achieve their full potential. There is a Boys and Girls Club in Greenville, Texas that serves more than 500 young people every year. Boys and Girls Clubs instill young people with the self-confidence to believe they can succeed at anything they can put their mind to and stand at the forefront of efforts in the areas of academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character, and citizenship. Boys and Girls Clubs in Greenville help ensure young people have a safe, supportive place to spend time and will provide them with the quality of youth development programs. The Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Texas will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week with approximately 5,000 other clubs and over 2 million children nationwide. So now, therefore, Jerry Ransom, Mayor of Greenville, Texas, appeared by proclaiming June 23rd to 27th, 2025, as Boys and Girls Club Week in Greenville, Texas. So here you go.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Sure, you bet. Do you want to be in the picture too? Probably got somebody. I can't hear you. You can be here. Block me out now. Thank you, thank you. You bet. Thank you very much. And I have a proclamation proclaiming Juneteenth. So would you like to introduce yourselves?
Yes, my name is Reverend Philip Duke, Senior Pastor at Christian Church and the President of the Greenville Branch NAACP-6181-B.
Honorable Kristen Washington.
I have a proclamation here proclaiming Juneteenth, which we now recognize as a holiday in the city every year. Whereas Juneteenth, Independence Day, or Freedom Day is a holiday that commemorates the June 19th, 1865 announcement of the abolition of slavery in Texas and more generally, the emancipation of African-American slaves throughout the Confederate South. Whereas Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on approximately, no, not approximately, on January 1, 1863, declaring the slaves of Confederacy 43, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery and slavery in the United States of America. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning, as it's called, "Juneteenth," combining the words "June" and "19th," and it is the oldest known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. Whereas Juneteenth not only commemorates African-American freedom, but it celebrates success gained through education and greater opportunities that remind each of us of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are at the core of the American dream. Now, therefore, we urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration of African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and our city. So thank you very much, and I want to present this to you. Dr. Duke, would you like to say?
Mayor, on behalf of the NAACP National Office, as well as the Texas State Conference Office, and the local office of the Greenville NAACP, on behalf of myself, the president, a member, Kristen Washington, and Brother James Olesley, we all members, we thank you for this presentation and taking time out to bring us forward to acknowledge this proclamation. We do celebrate this Juneteenth celebration this year at the Richard Graham Park on June 20th. Kristen, may I share more information with it very quickly?
And it's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the park. It's open to everybody. We'll have food trucks, live music, a live band, and just have family fun for everybody.
Thank you, Kedzie.
You bet. Now, I understand you'd like to present a flag or a certificate tonight.
On behalf of the Ambassador Fletcher Warren Chapter of the Texas Society of the Sons of the American Revolution, it's my privilege to present the city of Greenville with a flag certificate in recognition of exemplary patriotism and the display of the flag in the United States of America. And this is particularly, I wanted to note, the idea came after we put the big flag out on the highway. So it was fun to be there. I was with a different hat with the American Legion that day. But we wanted to recognize as a chapter group, flags that the city, let me get this straight, flags with the city fly on a daily basis at all of the facilities we have. So thank you very much.
We're very, very proud of all the flags. We have a lot of veterans. We're a very patriotic community. And so we certainly appreciate this presentation. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can we get a photograph for this?
Wait, it's where I'm going. I said, wait, it's where I'm going. We got a lot of people don't even appreciate being here.
Oh, call the senator. Okay, well, thank you very much. You bet. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate that. Dr. Duke, do you want to, did you want a picture?
Maybe we have.
I'll get him opposite.
Okay, in the one.
Okay, I'll call your attention to some placeholders in the agenda. Citizens to be heard in public testimony. Citizens can address the items on items that are not already scheduled for public hearing or on the agenda. Public testimony is for items that are on the agenda, beginning with item, whatever it would be. Let me give it to you. Resolutions tonight. We have no public hearings. We have no ordinance, so it'd be 8A tonight. So if you'd like to address the council on any of these issues, please present a citizen's comment card to the city secretary. I'll just ask, are there citizens tonight?
I just have one. Betty Monday.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Betty Monday, 3/4/14, West Martin Street, Greenville, Texas. And I am so glad to, I am so glad to be, I'm glad to be back in the number. And thank you guys that prayed for me while I was out. My quest, it's a question, really it is. Where my house is? I'm between two dukeses, one left side, one right side. Okay, the one that's on my right side, there's one, one of the places that's not, that's not occupied. So the grass is up like this. So my question is, who's responsible for that if no one is, if no one is in there, if no occupants are in there?
I don't.
I mean.
The owner of that property would be responsible. So if there's a code enforcement case on them, then it would be sent straight to the owner. So we can check on that, for sure.
That was mine. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just ask, are there any, is there any public testimony tonight? Okay, so if you'd like to, so I'll move right along to item 8A. Consideration and action on a resolution approving the purchase of K-9 equipment associated, training, and K-9 dog pre-trained in the narcotics detention, tracking, and patrol. Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's always a, appreciate your time. Today, the Greenville Department, our goal is always to have three working K-9 officers. For a brief time last year, we had three, and then due to certain circumstances, we had to retire one of our Canines and went back down to two. So we've been looking at a way to get our number back up to three. We applied for an AKC United Program Grant, and we're granted that for $7,500. And then L3 Harris made a very generous donation to the K-9 program. So now we have sufficient funds, and we are asking for a resolution from the city to go ahead and purchase our third K-9 with those funds, which would not cost the citizens of Greenville a penny.
Any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, I do have a question. If you didn't have the funds, could seizure funds have been used for this purchase?
I don't know if we have used seizure funds to purchase a K-9 in the past. If so, then no, we could not, because they can't be used to supplant something that's already been done. Plus, the majority of our seizure funds went for the purchase of the Gurkha. But the pictures up there is the dog that we are looking at purchasing. His name's Major.
Okay. What is the, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8A?
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
I second.
Please vote.
Oh, I forgot my meal. I'm sorry.
And it passes unanimously with Mr. Collins. Item 8B, consideration and action on a resolution selecting consultant for the Bike Ways and Trails Project. LaTorra.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We submitted an RFQ, submitted it online late spring, for a trails and bikeways and master plan to be developed, which is important for the city. It's basically a precursor to be able to get any funding from TexDOT, any type of citywide trail infrastructure improvements or additions. So we submitted an RFQ. We received three submissions. We chose half associates. They were the highest qualified. They basically had the most experience developing citywide master plans. Not only that, half typically does trail design and also funding. They were the ones that actually planned us to the funding to have this approved. So you know, this plan is being funded by the TexDOT After Transportation Set Aside Funds. And half were the ones that notified us about and helped us develop the package to get it. So happened, and they still happen to be the most qualified, which worked out pretty good. So we have a tight timeline here to be able to use the funds. We actually need to have approved contract submitted to TexDOT by the 27th that they can give to COG. And so today, we're presenting the selection, and then on the 24th meeting, we would like to present the contract for approval.
Any questions?
It's my understanding that TexDOT is paying for all of this.
Yes.
I think that's important for the citizens to know.
Yes.
Any questions from the council? What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Please vote. And that item passes 6-0 with one abstention. Consideration and action on a resolution approving city council subcommittee assignments as well as ad hoc assignments. I've made those. They've been presented to the council. And is, is there a motion regarding that, those assignments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Consideration and action on a resolution approving a contract with Texana Land and Asphalt for the 2025 Millon Overlay Street Project. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Steve Glass, engineer. On May 10th, May 17th, the 2025 Millon Overlay Project was advertised. We received five bids. The lowest was Texana Land and Asphalt. The lowest bid was 344, 303.95. We checked the references. There are seven references. They all came back with good reports, and we would like to recommend the award to this company.
I noticed that the bids were significantly, kind of all over the map, and the one we selected was about $75,000 less, I believe. I don't have that in front of me.
Yes, sir. I did talk with them about that. I called them. They're still good with their bid. And of course, we will have a performance bond on the contract.
Okay. Any other questions? Not? Is there, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8D?
I said one real quick, sorry. So what you have listed there is two other possible projects that could be done with the remaining funds?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, yeah, with the budget, we originally had a half a million dollar budget. We were estimating it to be about 470. It came in at the 344. So those two, when we discussed with the Transportation Subcommittee, those two were the ones that we took off in order to meet budget. So we, if we had budget left over, we agreed that we'd go back and be able to do those two with the Transportation Subcommittee. So we'll put those two out to bid, since it's estimated at about 141,000 for those two, and then come back to council with that to, for those remaining two streets.
Okay, great.
Is there a motion regarding this item 8D?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8E, consideration of possible action to authorize a city attorney to file a lawsuit for damages to the FM 1570 sewer lift station. Daniel?
All right. About two years ago, almost two years ago, there were, there was a big set of storms that came through town. One of those storms resulted in a sewer manhole construction site that had been left open, having some serious flooding. That flooding washed a lot of construction to breathe down the gravity line to the 1570 lift station and caused major damages, at least $140,000 in damages to the city's two pumps in the bottom of a wet well. Those pumps bring sewer, sewer water up to closer to the service, where it's then pumped through a pressurized pipe over the city's wastewater treatment plant. We know who did it. We know who they worked for. And what we're asking for tonight is permission to sue those people to force them to pay for the $140,000 plus in damages.
Okay. Any questions? If not, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8D?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item 8F, consideration and action on a resolution nominating Orbis Corporation as a Texas Enterprise Zone project. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate it, allowing us to come in today, talk to you about this project. Real quick, I want to Real quick, I want to say hello, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you for being here today on the service, all your service. Want to recognize some folks that are here. Our Chairman of the Board is Holly Gray, right here. Frank Stevenson, of course y'all know Frank, that's his chair, right there. Board member of Greenville Board Development. We also have most important person here today, but we have Orbis Corporation Plant Manager for the whole plant is here, Zach Johnson, right here. So we also have Orbis Consultants, Caitlin Glenn and Kaylee Pippins, Kay Andrews Tax Services, that have worked on this whole program with them. Back in January of 2024, the council had the pleasure, Mayor, thank you for your lead on this, and the council's approving the tax abatements for Orbis Corporation to rehab, re-inhabit the project here, which is the old Rubbermaid facility. And they took that facility over, and all of you need to go tour it. It is amazing what's going on there, what they're doing. And Orbis Corporation has done what they said they're going to do. And part of the incentive package that we agreed to back then is the recommendation from the Board of Development for them to seek a Texas Enterprise Zone project designation by the city. And what this is, is a, the state allows, is an estate incentive, it has nothing to do with the City of Greenville finances, so there's not another tax abatement, there's not anything that has to do coming out of the Greenville, City of Greenville budget or the Board of Development budget. This is purely a state program. The Texas Enterprise Zone Program is an incentive offered through the State of Texas benefiting local communities, corporations, economically distressed areas. It's designed for local communities to promote job creation, employment retention, business growth and development opportunities in targeted areas for economic stimulus. A local community must first nominate the business in their jurisdiction to be eligible. So that's why Kay Andrews is here today, they helped make the application to the state. And part of the application process is for y'all to nominate that, that's why it is here before you. And so there is a, it is a competitive award. The Governor's Office is authorized to designate up to 105 projects every two years, with applications accepted quarterly, limited to 12 designations per round. And every city or every county gets six designations, I think, is that correct still? Okay. Was it?
Depending on the population.
Depending on the population. I think ours is six. So you have six per biennial, so every two years. And so this is one that we will use for this one. We did, the last one we did was for L-3 Harris on the new warehouse that they built out at the airport. That was the last one we, the council approved. So without further ado, this is a project that's before you for your, seeking your approval. I do want to recognize, frankly, I recognize John Dixon, who's here sitting next to Zach, so John's helped take the lead on all of this stuff. But anyway, if there's any questions, Caitlin and Kaylee, Kaylee's the expert at this, so I think she's going to be, we're helping Caitlin on this, but any questions, we're happy to answer them, so thank you.
Any questions? So these rebates, I'll call them, are based essentially on the equipment purchased by them, their cap, this type of equipment, right?
Yeah, any purchases they've made in the State of Texas where they paid state sales tax, they get a portion rebated back to them based on the number of jobs they produce. Did I say that correctly? So, and it's just, there's, I think, a maximum, is it 500,000? I think is the maximum per application?
Maximum of 500 jobs.
500 jobs.
At $2,500 per job, so a maximum of 1.25 million. Over a five-year period.
For this category that you're applying for.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, I guess it's a little late to say welcome, but we're certainly happy you're here.
Mayor, you need to go tour, it's awesome. In fact, we're going to, we're going to plan a grand opening, so all of you get invitations.
I think you, we're going to hire 194 employees, starting off. Were you able to find all those people?
Zach, you want to come say anything?
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Orbis is so grateful on everything that the city has provided for us. We are in our ramp-up phase, we are still hiring, so we're a little over 100 employees right now, and we've only been operational since January 20th. So we're still adding equipment, still adding space, we're just finally getting, if you look in that upper left, or bottom-left corner of the building, we're getting into that section next month, so we're excited to expand, and we're still growing and hiring as much as we can.
And I think your average starting salaries are around 65,000, is that about right?
About right, yep.
Yeah.
Competitive benefits.
I better tell them I don't want it.
There you go. If anybody's watching this, I don't know who anybody watches this, but here's some job opportunities for you.
Yes, for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Very proud to have you. So what is the pleasure, do you have any more things, anything else, Greg?
No, just, what, any more questions?
So what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8F?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Consideration, item 8G, consideration and action on a resolution adopting fiscal year 2025, 2025, 2026 council goals, I think there's, anyway. And I did make one addition to those goals. I don't have them, I don't have them with me, but could you, it involves.
Yeah, hold on, we can pull it up.
Downtown?
That's correct. We added, we basically just added to the, Jeldean, will you click to? Okay, yeah.
Okay, it says encourage proactive property maintenance in downtown, I added that, by the way.
To goal number eight, so we really didn't add a goal, we just added it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In addition to number eight, correct? Is that how you wanted it?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And we can change it however you want, I mean, these are your council goals. This is, we just took your suggestion and added it to the, to eight, along with the downtown plan, so.
Well, if any council member would like to change the wording on that, the intent, I think the intent's obvious, but. So is there any comment about those? Any other additions? If not, what is the pleasure of the council regarding item 8G?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And the goals are approved, were approved unanimously. Just so you know, we use these goals, city staff, we establish these goals, and city staff uses those to prepare the budget, prepare the priorities for the city. So very good process. I'll ask the City Secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City Council Meeting Minutes, from May 27th. Resolution authorizing the City of Greenville representatives in matters pertaining to the city's participation in a Texas Community Block Grant Program. Consideration and action on a resolution approving the purchase of Neptune Water Meters and Meter Boxes. Consideration on a resolution entering into an agreement with Recite Me to provide website ADA compliance. And a resolution approving the purchase from Tangram Furniture for the Reese Davis Facility.
Are there any questions regarding any of those five items? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Please, second. And the consent calendar passes unanimously. There are no city staff, city council reports, is there any city council discussion of proposed agenda items? I'd like to bring up again the pricing strategy for the GMA. I'd like for that to be, okay, okay, I don't know, maybe that was appropriate for me to do it here, I don't know. We have boards and commission minutes, library advisory board minutes, and we've already been in an executive session. Thank you for being here tonight. This meeting is adjourned.